I'd like to lead it to the flag of the United States of America. To the Republic, for which it stands, one nation, under our, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone.
Good morning. Do you need an agenda? I can print you one.
No, you can just, you can help me with this.
All right. So, introduction of those present. So, we've got Mr. Beecher, Mr. Hewlett, Ms. Van Hort, Mr. Malcolm, and myself, Ms. Powers. Mr. Jones will probably be on his way. And in the audience this evening, I have noted who everybody is. Is your name Tom Fuller?
Yes.
Okay. I've got everybody, and then if you speak this evening, we'll just identify who you are. So that sounds good. Everybody happy with that? Addition or deletion of agenda items? So, two additions this evening, I think. And then if anybody else had anything, let me know. Bob Morleano has requested an auditorium rental use, which I had forwarded to you all. And then Bob had emailed me about an executive session this evening to discuss employee labor relations agreements. So, I thought that the auditorium rental could be during new business and whenever you'd like to do the executive session. Mike, but those...
At the end of the night, I think, would be.
Okay. And in terms of other things that we had on the agenda, Bruce Surjane is here. And I had put him under the pre-requested section to continue the discussion about the wastewater fees. And we were going to discuss the ARPA funds, ways in which we can and cannot use that under old or unfinished business. So, I don't think anything needs to be deleted. Does anybody else have anything that wants?
The town truck did sell.
Okay. So, we can talk about that under our ongoing business.
I would think so, yeah.
And then we do have paving bids here as well, which I don't know when. Want to talk about that during?
We can do that during your report, which comes up pretty quickly. So, cleaning that all right with you, Keith?
Okay. Great. So, next up, we have approval of the minutes from the previous meeting, which was July 13th. Right? Okay. Thanks. They looked good to me. I'll move, we approve the minutes.
I'll second that.
More discussion? In favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posted?
Carried.
Okay. So, pre-requested. So, we have Bruce Surjane.
So, a couple of things that we've, we've come up with is, is a fact that because it doesn't have a hookup in the street, doesn't mean that we wouldn't, if you chose to need sewer, we would, it would be our responsibility to make sure that a tee was installed. So, that's...
It does or doesn't?
Well, that's a little bit gray. We couldn't find it on the as-built map in the sewer system. But being that it's a separate property, it would be our responsibility as a town to, to make that happen. So, that was one of the things. But the other thing that came up was the fact that you own both properties. And did you conjoin the two lots, or they still?
They're still separate, and I prefer to keep them separate, but I don't have a problem making up into that building if that piece happened when the time comes.
But one of the questions was the fact that if they, if the, both of the lots were conjoined, so then that could be considered an accessory building, which, which would not necessarily be subject to the user fee.
Of course, that would have to go through the zoning administrator to do any kind of change in use or conjoining lots or anything like that. And it would probably, joining the lots, I think, would have to go through the DRB.
I would prefer not to have to join the lots if there was a way to go around that.
So, and then the other side of the coin is that from the time the sewer was put in, a sewer tax was levied against that building and always paid up till a few years ago when, when they grieved it. And the, the Board of Abatement abated the taxes on it for a year or two. Right. I mean, I don't, I read that paper over, and it was like...
The only reason that the Board agreed to the abatement was because of the curb installation by the Highway Department resulted in water filling in there and causing damage that allowed, disallowed them from use of the property. And that was the reason that we abated the taxes.
So, it didn't have to do with whether there was a sewer hookup or not. It had to do with the, some damage that was done to the building.
So, it sounds to me the only way around that would be if it was one piece of property, and that was an accessory building to your existing home or, or building.
So, as it's two lots, we really can't see a way to abate the sewer?
That's my understanding.
Yeah.
I mean, there's a lot of other properties that are paying that, that are not hooked up.
Sure. So, how many properties are, do we know? Does anybody know how many properties are paying, like sewer taxes?
122 is what you're...
122?
122 is what you said.
Okay. So, if it's, if I have to pay the tax, I assume you guys don't want to have to put a tee in, in out there for that building? I'm going to keep it separate, right?
Right. It would, it would not, it would not be required to go through somebody else's building. It would have to go directly into that building. Julie?
Have you looked, have you read the ordinance from when the sewer system was put in? I'm not 100% that it is the town's responsibility to pay for it, or maybe the owners. I don't know. It's our responsibility to provide this.
They, they have to get it out to there, but I believe that we have to have, we have to be able to accept it. They have to get it to our... I don't know.
There must be a tee in the line there where I can get to. I mean, yeah, anything in the building is my responsibility, but it has to get in this building.
Exactly. And I don't, like I say, I don't know. It's possible that there's a tee in the line, but it didn't show it on, out there. So, it's, it's possible that they, they didn't. But I know that the sewer tax levy was, was paid right along until, until that, that time.
The only other thing that I would like to clear up is just, just a small language thing. We used the term "abate" without this meeting, and this is not the Board of Abatement. So, you don't have the authority to abate taxes tonight.
Right. The only, the only thing we could do is we could amend the sewer ordinance.
I just wanted to clarify. I know that you all understand that, but I just wanted to...
We're not abating taxes, are we?
No.
We would have to...
She said the word "bait," and I just for the record, wanted to make things clear.
The only thing we could do tonight would, we would have to make an amendment to the sewer ordinance.
Right, but that has nothing to do with tax abatement.
No. But that's what... The only, um, the only reason that the abatement come up is because it was abated due to the fact that it was flooded by stormwater.
But that was property value, correct?
No, it was...
It was abated?
It was, we abated property and sewer tax.
Property, both. Okay.
Abated those taxes because of water running in from the road into the sewer, or into the basement. And nothing was ever done about that.
It was, there was a repair made on the road.
Okay.
I mean, is water still running into the basement?
Uh, no. It's a little bit. I mean, the basement needs work. It's not really anything, I mean, it runs off the road there. There's a cove around the other side of the road. There's no curb there. So, if there's not dirt built up there, it'll run down into the basement still.
At this point, I don't know. Does anybody on the board see anything? Have any other, uh, anything to add to this conversation, but?
I just, I just wanted to say that if we do make some kind of change or exception for this property, there are a number of other properties that would be affected as well.
Exactly.
So, it's that kind of situation.
There's other buildings that are in town that...
Don't have sewer hookups?
Well, that are not being used even.
If it's a separate piece of property. There is properties that have accessory buildings that just pay one hookup.
That one, pay one hookup. And if there's, there's houses in town that, that are duplexes, and they pay two hookups.
So, I need to make a decision whether or not I want to join the properties or have you guys put a tee in the line and put a sewer line in there? Okay.
Yep.
I'll have to think about that and come back, yes. Thanks.
Thank you, Bruce.
So, there are no other pre-requested appearances. So, the next item on the agenda are announcements, of which I have none coming from my desk. Unsure whether or not anybody else has any announcements this evening.
I have something about the scoping study, but I'll piggyback after Keith, we get through the bid opening.
So, that brings us to reports. And the first report on the agenda this evening is the zoning administrators' report. And there was no... Jonas had sent along, which I had forwarded to the Board, the copy of the permits to be reviewed at the Planning Commission meeting last night, as well as the Select Board meeting this evening. Would you like me to run through those? Or, it's the zoning permit log. So, unsure on how you want to discuss that, or if you want to discuss that, or if you all just have observed it.
The zoning permit log is posted somewhere, right?
Yes.
Guess if anybody's interested, they can find where it's posted. And it was, what, just one or two?
It was, it's the entire log.
Right, but there was only a couple, and what, did he?
Yes. Sorry, I'm just pulling it up. So far in July, there have been sev-, uh, three permits. There's two on July 7th and one on July 21st. One was for livestock barn, another was for adding a second floor and other, and another was for a mobile home. So, if anybody has any questions about those, feel free to contact the zoning administrator, or you can contact me, and I can help put you in touch with the zoning administrator. So, the Planning Commission's report is next.
Yes, I have a Planning Commission report, which I emailed to everyone this afternoon. We met last night and discussed our priorities going forward. We came to a consensus that both the Enhanced Energy Plan and the continuing work on the conditioning uses in the bylaws are important and time-sensitive, and that for the rest of 2021, we want to split our time between them in meetings. So, do one half of the meeting for one and one half the meeting for the other. We are hoping to conclude our work on the Enhanced Energy Plan within two to three more meetings. So, having that done by the end of the year. What we're currently working on is specific language in the Enhanced Energy Plan that if properly written and then properly adopted by the town, so it would go through that same process of a public hearing with the Planning Commission. Planning Commission votes on it, because it's an amendment to the town plan, and then a public hearing with a Select Board. Select Board votes on it. It would give us what's called substantial deference with the Public Utility Commission, as opposed to the due consideration we have now. And substantial deference is better than due consideration, but I don't know how much in percentage-wise, right? Because it hasn't really been tested a lot with the state. So, I don't know if it's like we used to have 25%, and now we have 75% or what. But it will be better. This substantial deference means the Public Utility Commission will be obligated to take the town's written plans about energy siting into account when deciding whether to issue a certificate of public good to an energy developer. And this would be like that, um, the document that came through at our last meeting, the one for the solar siting on Buttons Falls Road, right? Right now, if we want to say anything to the Public Utility Commission, they will give us due consideration. If we have an approved Enhanced Energy Plan with the right kind of language, they will give us substantial deference. That will not give us a veto power over energy projects in our town, but it will definitely make our voice stronger. So, in order to get the substantial deference, what we need to do is identify particular sites by the name of the road, the mountain, or et cetera, rather than by the zoning district. And we have to put language into the plan such as "must" and "shall." So, definitive language of that variety to indicate that specific energy projects, such as solar projects of a certain size or wind energy projects, may not be located there. So, we're beginning to work on this by looking at maps of potential energy siting that are created by the state and comparing them to maps which were created by the Community Values Mapping Project, which was done here in Paulette in 2019, which talks about like our scenic views and about our hunting and wildlife and things that people in the community care about. And we're also using our own knowledge of the town. And we want to identify the spots the state thinks are good for solar, but that as far as the town is concerned are not actually good for solar. There are some spots the state has identified that are heavily forested. And as a town, we really don't necessarily want some developer to come in and cut down acres of forest and put up some solar panels. So, we need to name these areas in our Enhanced Energy Plan. We also did look at the communication we received about the MHG solar installation proposed for Button Falls Road, as that's somewhat in the purview of the Planning Commission. And it's the sense of the Planning Commission that that spot is an excellent one for a larger solar installation, as it's on an old slate quarry, and it's screened from public view. So, the Planning Commission decided not to lodge any concerns with the Public Utility Commission, but let the project proceed. Also of note, we were going to have the gentleman from Green Mountain Power come to our meeting last night, but he wrote down the wrong day, so he didn't make it. So, he's going to be coming to our September meeting, because in planning for energy in the town, we wanted to talk to Green Mountain Power, because Frank suggested I show this around. This is the map of our energy grid here in the town of Paulette. You may note, it's entirely red. This means that our grid has less than 10% of capacity remaining. So, that's kind of a problem for us putting up a lot of new energy projects. So, what we want, what the Planning Commission wants to ask Green Mountain Power is, is are they planning on improving the grid at all in our area or adding any redundancies? Because we also don't have any redundancies or if something goes out. So, we, we kind of want to light a little fire under them to see if they have it in their five-year plan to do any grid upgrades in this area. So, that's, that's the Planning Commission report.
Anybody got any questions for the Planning Commission? Frank?
Next, next meeting, when this fellow's here, it'd be good for anybody here interested to attend, because the grid we have is 1950's technology. And possibly when it comes into putting charging stations and open stuff to increase use and demand, we have a threshold which really is not much of a ceiling. And that would be, that's one of the questions, Frank, to keep hopefully answering us, how much can be added to it from a renewable energy generation perspective, or also use.
Yeah. And Wayne, who's our alternate on the Planning Commission, who used to work with this kind of thing, was saying that as it is right now, if we have less than 10% of the grid remaining, if everybody turned everything on at once in the town, we'd overload the grid probably, you know? So, good thing we don't all have our lights on all at once. But, um, and it is not going to be August meeting, it's September meeting. He's going to come. So, September meeting, if any, we'll, we'll put that in the warning for the meeting. But if anybody's interested in talking to someone from Green Mountain Power about the grid in the area, that would be the time to come.
So, it's not a supply issue, it's a grid issue.
Yeah. I mean, it's a supply issue in that to meet our energy goals, we do need more supply, especially if people are putting in like EV chargers, right? I mean, I've experienced that myself. I got solar panels last year, and they were great. And then I got an electric vehicle, and I got a kiln for pottery. And now the solar panels don't make enough for me, right? And so, that's going to probably be a situation going forward as people move to electrified vehicles more. So, but yeah, right now, it's definitely, there is a grid issue in our area. And it's not in all of Vermont. If you look at the whole state, Green Mountain Power has a very nice online tool that you can look at. There's some spots that are green or yellow, and we're just over here in Paulette. They're, they're fine.
The substations, the substations right close by, it's, you know, it's probably, they got to upgrade all the lines regardless of...
Yeah. And what is it, just to, Danby is fine. Danby's grid is great. They have plenty of...
Tom would know that.
They evidently have plenty of, um, you know, capacity in Danby, but Paulette is not doing so great as far as capacity.
Problem is in Danby, and the substation set in Waller, Berlin, that's actually almost maxed.
Okay.
So, we, we've got capacity on the lines because they rebuilt all the lines, moved them out of the woods down to the highway.
It's a supply issue.
Yeah. And, but the substations, and that speeds like three or four towns, so...
Well, and I know that the, the aging grid is a national problem. I mean, it's a problem here, but it's a problem in lots of other places. So, I mean, I hope that some of this infrastructure money that might come down from the federal government might go into upgrading the grid, because we need it. But that's not my business.
Then I need to find somebody to do it.
Make a lot of jobs.
Okay. Any more questions for the Planning Commission? All right. On to Keith.
Paving bids? Can I first start there?
Yep.
I can open them.
There you are.
John and Jessica, the liaison, you guys do it.
Oh, okay. It's like Christmas. Open some bids.
Just the scope of work and the prices that they're providing. If this will later will get proper proof of insurance and everything we need from them before they go to work. But this will just be the...
Okay.
Anything to do, Jessica, just read it out loud, who it's from.
Yep. All right. So, this one is from Fuller Sand and Gravel. Uh, do we want to read the description of the, um, of the project as well?
Everyone filled out the same sheet.
Okay, so it's the same sheet.
We just read the price per ton and the estimated tonnage.
All right. So, I'll just read once what it is. Okay. It's starting from the intersection of Route 133 and continuing east to the Danby-Paulette line, about 1.65 miles. And they're going to put down a shim course of 3/4 inch type 4 to be compacted using a rubber tire roller, and the top wear course of 1 inch type 4. Okay. This person has price per ton for Button Falls Road 69, and price per ton for Danby-Paulette Road 66. All right. So, estimated tonnage, 2.181 tons?
21.
21, 2181. This bid is from Wilk Paving. Their price is very similar, 69.95 per ton, and they estimate 2137. And then we've got Pike Industries, Inc. Coming in a little higher at 79.20 per ton, and their estimate is considerably higher. They think they're going to need 26.74 tons. There's our green.
What I had him do, Mike, is bid on the grant project, which is the Danby-Paulette Road. And then I thought we'd have extra money for shimming, so I just had him put a price per ton in for the Button Falls Road, just so we can take a look at what we have left over and see how many tons we could potentially shim with.
Right.
So, the bid is not necessarily the price per ton on the Button Falls Road. That's just an addition. The bid is estimated tonnage and price per ton on the Danby-Paulette Road.
Because Tom's bid was slightly higher for the, for the Button Falls Road shim project.
He's got it here.
Did anybody else have a slightly higher bid for the shim project, or did they?
Um, this one has optional spot shims. Here, have a look at that one. And this one here just has, it's just one price per the whole thing.
Okay, so, so Wilk was average 1 inch deep, type 4, $82 per ton. That's why, that's why Wilk's just...
Did you get a good look at them, John?
I couldn't.
Okay. If you're done with one, we'll pass them down. John wants to see them too.
21.01 a ton for the Danby-Paulette Road. They lumped it all together at the end and gave us the same price.
Yeah, they're figuring way over.
Well, 26 plus 5.73 for the Button Falls Road. 21.01. They were, they were a little bit light.
I'm a Danby-Paulette.
Right. They, they did split it out. They said 21.01 for the Danby-Paulette Road, and then 5.73 for Buttons Falls at, at the same. And they didn't alter the price all, 79.20 a ton.
Did Wilk have a separate price per over?
They did, yep. Separate per ton price.
What was their per ton price for Button Falls?
82.
What? 82?
Mm-hmm. Isn't that right? I can't place it.
Yeah. 82.
Mm-hmm.
And their price was what, on the Danby-Paulette Road, 69?
69.95.
What considerations do we have on this besides price? I mean, do we?
We're not, we're not doing anything on the, uh, on, uh, the shoulder. No shoulder work.
Well, we originally applied for the shoulder money with the grant. We didn't put it in a bid, no.
Okay, we didn't apply. Okay, we didn't put it in a bid. Okay. Because sometimes in the past, we, we put that into the bid too, correct?
We can skip it to the grant.
That's just their, well, this is their thing that says it's gonna, if it fluctuates, they will change it at the time of paving. And then that's their insurance certificate.
Probably everybody has that.
Yeah, probably.
Yeah. It's directly related to the price of fuel, so it can be just volatile, up or down, so...
Yeah. This one says if they, within seven days, the port's only good for seven days. Pike Industries says.
And I think most of them are booking right now, will...
Is that one you could get here?
You got any corn on this, bro?
Not up there. Not 133.
Usually when we get there, they start chopping some.
Yeah. They put the mud down just before the pavement.
So, what do you, what's, uh, do we want to act on that right now? Or the quote's good for seven days only, so really need to?
I mean, we might as well act on it now. I don't see any reason not to.
It's fairly obvious, isn't it? It'd be a really big surprise if anybody could put pavement on the Danby-Paulette Road cheaper than Tom Fuller from Danby. It's just the rest of them are coming from Brooklyn. It's a transportation difference, and that's what it is. So, it's no surprise there.
Tom's paved here for years.
And no problem with him at all, so there's no, no reasonable consideration not to award that bid, in my opinion.
I would make a move to accept Tom Fuller's bid.
I'll second that.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Foes, carried. Thank you, Tom.
Thank you, guys.
And other than that, everything is, I see the excavator's in place to go home and...
Place that's waiting for a ride, yeah. We're, they're looking for a truck. I mean, he asked me about a truck. I tried a little bit, but that's his baby, so he'll, it's waiting for, or 26 was our last day, Monday, and then we finished, so done in Rupert. We went back to Rupert, just to make use of it. We're still going to be counting on Rupert to come at some point for our Kelly Hill project, so they're aware of that. You know, we're kind of both working short-handed right now, so super retired.
Skip retired, huh? Oh, shit. So...
Only 47 years.
Only 47? Jeez, slug. Um, so what did, uh, will we need to rent an excavator for the Kelly Hill project?
I'm hoping not, but we did not anticipate we would need one on this one either. I mean, it just, that's the way the cookie crumbled when it came to it. We couldn't get material without.
Nobody was able to load us.
So, in discussion I've had, yes, they'll say they'll have something, but we, who knows? You may get halfway through it, you know, that's not going to be a big project, but we're, it's going to be, it's four-tenths of a mile. It's going to be 200 loads, you know?
The one?
We can get 40 loads a day in there, five or six days we'll have it, you know, but that's, um, that's...
We got a little bit more of a window for that project, so...
Has to be completed by October 31st.
October 31st, right. So, that's coming out quick.
Right, well, we've got a lot going on between now and then too, so it's, uh, gonna be, yeah, I mean, yeah, we've got 90 days to plan on it, let's plan on it, and we'll work ahead of our work however it fits. It'll be an evolving situation.
Having been on the buying end of used vehicles right now, it's not surprising we got a good amount.
Talking with Stanley about...
It's a good time for a seller's market.
Eleven bucks, that's what he's looking for, for the same product he made us last year. Uh, Dulushia is 11 bucks a ton for the product that you're talking about, so.
A-stone.
If, and Gary's use of that, is he able to use less because it's a better product? My question is, can we get the mileage out of a ton of that if we would a yard of sand? Because I think it's going to be 1.5, of course, you know, I think 1.5 tons per yard.
Per yard.
Losing a quarter of volume.
Yeah, so can, what makes it feasible is, we've got some things going on, or even now, we've got some guys that can do some trucking, and we'd be ahead some time to do some of that stuff, work back and forth. And my suggestion might be to put the West Paulette pile up in the near future and have that, that we've done it over with, and then if we decide that that's working for us, we can get some from Ken later, we can talk to him. I, I've got some concerns about him being able to produce it for us, too. He's, you know, he's behind with no help, and...
We should get, uh, we should get all the prices down on paper so we have it in front of us.
One of the things that I've seen since I've lived on a dirt road is the sand product, all the sand product through the, through time is detrimental to the road surface.
And there's no question about that, but part of our problem also is, Mike, is that we've prolonged that by not having a proper top dress coming out. So, if we then put material...
I've seen some of the roads that we've redone, like I went over Kelly, uh, Wait Hill a couple of years after that, and in the spring, and, and I saw the same slime already, and we'd already fixed that road all up, so.
Well, that...
Where did that come from? Poor gravel that we topped it with, or winter sand?
Well, and how much is tracked out of the farmer's fields every time?
It was consistent.
No, I'm just saying, it, it happens.
It was consistent of the whole road.
One, one simple top dress of that Beaman's Hill would be it, and you've, everybody, that's the very first one that we rocked and did. What year did we do that?
Was it about five, six years ago, probably, or more, or?
Oh, well, you're down low. I'm talking about Beaman's Hill.
Oh, way up there.
That was 2002.
I, I think my, it was like three years ago or so, and I came over by Donald Waits and then down through there that we'd just done like two years prior, and, and I was surprised how much, how much of that pudding was up.
And there's no...
It worked up through, and I felt that some of that had to be from the, the sand product that we're putting on.
And some of it is, but this is a completely different sand product we've been using the past couple of years, too.
The stuff we're getting from Stanley.
Yeah, yeah. So, it's, it's a different product. It's, it's not silty, it's clean, it's not washed, but it's clean.
So, then my point would be then, if we put some stone in the roads that are already silty, it should add value to the top.
It should, yeah. You can put stone down. We, I mean, we add stone all the time anyway.
Right, now that...
Do we have it for what? We've been buying some sand, and if that is stony enough.
Right, it's got, it's got a heavy enough stone base in it.
And it's, if we want to try some of that stone product, that's the perfect time to do it.
I know that, like last year, there was, every, especially when we grade and stuff, we have a lot of trouble with a lot of those roads, Switch Road and Check Clark Road and stuff like that. So, we have to do something to bring up, to bring the quality of the, to driving surface back, and instead of just maintaining it or...
Has anybody ever gotten a price from SLC on fines?
Yeah, it's too fine. We would have to blend like a 3/8 or a 3/4 stone product with what they call their winter sand product. That's made to put down on a blacktop, you know, so there's nothing in it that's going to fly off the tire and break a windshield, so it's really finer than what we'd want to put on a dirt road. And it's, I don't, I, I shouldn't say, because I'm not sure. I think it's, that's around $8 a ton.
Trucking would be, I mean, that would take a toll on the equipment for sure up and over that hill, but I thought last year we went in there and got some stuff that was fairly coarse. Um, there's some years we go get a fertilizer filler that's just, you know, really, really fine, works well, um, but...
And you're using it for?
We use it on concrete, that stuff. Um, but we got the other last year to run through Sanders, and it was fairly coarse. And I don't know if they made a mistake, or somebody went to the wrong pile, or what happened, but they came home with a load of coarse material. Maybe worth looking into, just see what they've got. But that's going to take a toll on the trucks.
Yeah, it's actually a better haul for Dulushia.
On fuel and brakes.
Fuel and brakes and everything, time, you know, it's, everything to Wallingford is uphill or down all the way, down through the Brook Road and, you know, or Dulushia, once you get out of there, you come right back 149 into Gravel pretty quick, you know.
Yeah, I just didn't know what they had for material, materials there, or prices.
So, I'm, I, I really would like to see that A-stone, but that's one voice. I've seen, you know, where, where it seems to go on the driveways, it seems to, it, the driveways are certainly, the two driveways around our house that he spreads it on are certainly a lot nicer in the spring than when he used the sand product, and he always used a decent sand product, so.
We should get prices and see what we can justify.
Right.
You know, either we can or can't, see what the final number looks like, and, you know, maybe that stone will add value, and, but maybe we can't afford it, who knows? We should look at the prices, and I don't know how many tons or yards we need either.
We usually put up a hundred load in Paulette, 1,500 yards, 1,400, 1,500, and then 60, 70 loads in West Paulette.
That'd be 2,000 ton. At 1,500, or, uh, what'd you say it was? You lose a quarter?
Right, you're going to be 1.5...
So, it'd be 2,000 ton at 1,500 yards.
1.5 tons per yard.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, and until we really, until we really try it, we can't really see how far it goes.
It'll be, it'll be a trial there. There's no question, if you can put enough down to make it not slippery, it's a good product. It's going to be whether you can utilize it in a manner that is cost-effective.
Is there enough money in the budget to get, what would we need, 2,000 ton in Paulette? 100 loads? In what, in West Paulette?
60 loads, 700 yards, you know?
1,200 ton.
1,000, you could, you save 3,000 ton, you would have to for both sides of town.
What do we have for winter sand in the budget? Or is that mixed with the salt, too?
No, there is a sand budget now, a line item. I think it's $30,000, if I'm not mistaken.
And this is nothing we have to decide tonight. Let's get some prices together and get them in front of us.
Keep working out some more numbers. I don't know, I don't know any other towns other, Dorset uses, of course, a rock product.
They use the SLC, that's where theirs comes from. Um, Danby has used SLC, they've got sand from Tom Fuller, they've, you know, hit and miss. Uh, Cassleton, they bid theirs out, Stanley Martel bids on that, usually Casella out of Rutland, and I don't know, um... So, I don't, you know, you're running out of places around here, you're going to get, just, you're just, Stanley, or Charlie Holcomb's got a pile of sand over there, if you can get it sorted out, it makes a product, but that's going to be the lower end of the quality factor there.
Right, that's going to be the silt that we've, we're dealing with.
That we're trying to stay away from.
Right, so. But I just don't, I don't know of any towns around that are using a, a, like an A-stone product.
No.
Even in New York State. Okay. So, yeah, Richie's right, we probably should just do some more research and try and...
See what we can afford and can't afford, and if we can justify it, or we can't justify it.
See how it affects. Frank?
Um, year after year, and just big product price to go up due to less, less availability or inflation?
Yeah, it's going to, prices are going to keep going up.
I mean, the price I just voted on the winter sand is a dollar more a yard than what last year.
It was last year, right, that was ten. But we've only been buying winter sand for what, three years now?
The price of fuel plays a huge role in it.
They did, and my second question is, how many years of large projects do you have out in front now that are still waiting in the wings to be done?
Um, large projects, not many.
We still got, what, 15 miles of road, right?
Yeah, I mean, we're working on that as kind of an effort, but, yeah, we're talking about putting the rocks on the road, like we did on the Harris Road.
Dixon, all the dirt roads.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, at best, we're going to get a mile a year done.
For, well, you...
The beauty of that, that...
26 miles of dirt road, so.
So, each year, those projects possibly going to open up because of...
Oh, yeah, no question.
So, the question ahead is, would it make sense to do an analysis of it, what the long-term cost is going to be, and to, um, bond out massive purchase of material, so you can do it annually, or to ramp up and, and make those years into a shorter thing? And over to longer term, it may save the money back, because you're going to be paying a bond up piece by piece, and you love payback. It won't be seeing increases in economic changes in that same period. So, that might be worth a study, might be able to get a grant for it, to see it going in with a big purchase and storing the material, so you don't have to say, oh, this over here is over here, but you use some massive transport to get it in and stockpile it and pay it out piece by piece through this bond, through a bond concept. That might make sense, I don't know, it, it would need an analysis. That's it.
Thank you. Anything else for Keith? I guess we got that right now. Richie, tell us the good, oh, John?
All right, go ahead, Rich.
Oh, uh, I wanted to mention that Keith had ordered the, uh, the parts we need for the new street project, so, the catch basin in the culvert, so that's on its way to fix... Right, the one right down there that we looked at that one morning. Um, so that's, that's on its way. And then the town truck, that auction ended yesterday, and the town got 12,700 bucks for it, for that and the plow. So, I thought that's, that was a pretty good, pretty good number for that truck.
I would say that's a really good number for that truck.
What kind of mileage did that truck have?
169,000.
Okay.
But they're tough ones.
Yeah.
I wish it had an hour, I wish it had an hour, because we don't get like 50 miles an hour, we're working at 20. So, if we let 169,000, 20 miles an hour instead of 50, then that, that truck probably has 20,000 an hour.
Plus some of it's backwards, too.
Change your direction, yeah.
Um, so that's, that was good. We will have to pay a $40 fee out of that. Originally, when I talked with David from Auction International, he explained it, the way he explained it to me, I thought we were responsible as a seller for the 10% fee, but turns out, we don't pay that fee, we pay, it's either a 30 or a $40 fee. I've, um, got that all back at the office, so. All of that 12,700 is going to come back to the town minus 30 or 40 bucks.
So, now, I guess we need to make a motion to sell the truck for this auction price.
Probably the way to do it.
Is the right, is the right way to have it, and pay, so. You want to make that motion, Rich, that we, uh, accept this, this price?
I'm making a motion to accept this price to sell the truck.
I'll second that.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
All right.
And you'll be the contact on that truck? Okay.
And I'll just get with, uh...
So, we put it all together today. We put the tailgate and the flot down.
Oh, you put it on?
No, we didn't put it in, but it's all in the back of the truck up there now, and then there was a set of fenders over there, and one with a two of it, I brought all one and put in there, because we simply have no, no use form anyway, they might pull go with it, so.
Good.
Tell me, what is the good you've seen before?
Oh, I did. And we're, we're also getting prices on, uh, on mower, roadside mowing tractors with boom mowers on them, so we're still working, uh, working on getting some prices, and I'll share them with everybody once, once we get that together, and then we can figure out whether we can or can't afford it, and if we can, how much we have to spend on one. So, we've got to determine that.
We got 12,000, 12,000 more to spend, but, uh, Dave gets us five grand to do the, the blacktop in the fall?
Second shot, yes.
So, it's 15 grand total a year?
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, there is a 17.
Fifteen, right, it was 10,000 for the beginning and then five more for, so. So, that's 75,000 in five years, so that tractor certainly would last longer in five years with minimal maintenance.
Yeah, the, the one that, that we've seen so far is in great shape.
It's about 75, somewhere in that area.
And that's with the new head. It's a little more than that. It's 62 with the, uh, the existing head that's on it, which is a four-foot flail mower, which is good for mowing grass, but, uh, I asked them to get a price on a rotary, five-foot rotary head for pushing the brush back, cutting the brush back, which a rotary head is more suited, uh, for that. So, uh, they're looking, um, to see if we can find a good used one at the moment. So, they're going to have two heads, one for, it would really shine on the grass, and then another head that would bolt right on it, and can go after some good-sized brush.
Yeah, we would be somewhere... Yeah, we would be somewhere maybe 80,000 to 80,000.
At the most, it would, somewhere between 60 and 80.
That would be, that would be an ideal, ideal spot for us to look at, try to keep it in that kind of a budget.
And the one that we've seen so far has around 1,400 hours on it, been very well taken care of. And that same machine knew 175, 175,000. So. I mean, we wouldn't use one enough to justify a new one, but. A good used one, I think we can justify.
The job-specific piece of equipment is the problem. That's what it does, is it can go mow the roadside. So we can't draw gravel, pile snow, do everything else with it. It's job-specific and when you spend that kind of money on a job-specific piece of equipment, I just think you have to be a little careful, that's all.
Now Wells was talking about putting a broom on the front of theirs, but they said that wasn't gonna be cost effective.
It limited what you can do because your hydraulic power drives off the front, right off the front, help the front of the tractor to a hydraulic. So I think what you should have on the back is the blower. And then when you, after you're done, you can go blow your debris out of the road and, you know, clean things up. You know what I'm saying? A PTO on a three-point hitch with a blower on it, so.
That would also work good in the fall to clean.
Clean the leaves out of the ditch and open the culverts up and everything, yeah. Rupert has one.
Rupert got a blower?
Well, Sandgate bought it, but they don't have a tractor, so they put it on Rupert's tractor and both towns use it, so. It does work quite well.
So we'll keep the, keep that conversation going on, on that machine, but. Yes, we would have labor and, and operating costs, but I think five-year, a five-year kind of payback thing. I mean, this tractor would certainly last longer than that, I would just say.
It can be utilized a good portion of the winter as well.
Right.
The thing is, it's gonna get done. Right now, it's not getting done. The roads are being overtaken and it's not safe to walk, it's not safe to ride your bike, it's not safe to drive through with anything bigger than a Prius. You know, because limbs are hanging in and they need to be opened up. And that's the only feasible way to do it is with a long-term maintenance plan like that and not just complain that the road through doesn't cut enough brush.
And the nice thing about that too, once you go through with that machine, you're gonna see which trees need to be cut. You know, you're gonna have a handful of them on a stretch of road that are gonna have to be cut with a saw.
And then once you cut them, you have the ability to maintain them back there every year or every third year or every fifth year. And as opposed to just spending all your time cutting this brush and then five years later, it's all grown back in. And you're not gonna get back to that spot in five years. It's not going to happen.
I think it's a safety thing too in that if you've got a tunnel you're trying to drive through, whether it's with a hay wagon or a cab tractor. You end up driving more in the middle of the road than you otherwise would have.
Oh, yeah.
Exactly.
So.
Pushes, pushes the traffic to the center of the road.
Should be putting mirrors on.
Well, it takes mirrors.
Yeah.
All right, I think that, that's a, a very good topic to keep high on, high on our, our list to work through this. To see where we can, see how we can make it work.
We don't want to underestimate the type of operator that it takes to run.
Right.
The road mower thing and finding all the undiscovered electric fence, ground rods and, and everything else. I mean, I, I watch with awe watching.
Dave?
Dave.
Oh, yeah.
Work between trees and stuff, so.
It's like he's playing a piano on that thing.
Yeah. He is, he's literally.
He's a good operator.
So. Mike, I've got just about the scoping study, the, the intersection scoping study. Eric Hall, who's managing it for us that we signed the contract with and approved last time. And Devin Neary, who's stepping back from it, um, from Rutland Regional Planning Commission. We had a, uh, a Zoom meeting the other night, quick meeting. Just that he's putting out the RFPs for who will do the study and I forget the date when they're due, but he's managing that. There has been some brick back through the office and whatever, that the town isn't doing enough to look at that intersection. And there's a rumor about a blinking light coming in and, and, uh, um. Who knows what rumors create in this office, I don't know, Julie.
I don't start rumors, I script.
You're the only representative.
Last time it was gonna be around about there.
Oh, yeah, I heard that one recently too.
So anyway, if people ask, we are actively working on this. And, uh, the scoping study. Analysts will be chosen soon from their applications. Some people wanted it in the town website, but I, I think it's a fairly technical thing that's the request for RFPs.
Right, definitely.
So I, I don't think it's a general public of interest.
Study put together by a traffic engineer or this guy.
Right, right.
Put, put the whole package together and then you'll act on his recommend, his or her recommendations.
Then you gotta score them. We did on, on the sewer treatment plant, you had to score them. All the, all the responses had to be scored.
Right, it'll be well handled because the engineer will be the same, like.
Oh, this was the last one. Not that time. No, I saw his name on that. Peter. Now, what you don't know, Jessica, is the traffic engineer that's, that's on the scoping study, Peter Potap, is the one that was the engineer on the sewer plant that didn't work out so good. So hopefully he's found his niche.
He went up sewer.
Traffic guy.
I know.
Oh, I had a question. You know those, what, what's the status with those, um, traffic? Radar, radar, traffic signs we were supposed to get?
Setting on a pallet.
Yeah, we gotta, we gotta choose a position to, to place them.
Yeah, why don't we put them somewhere? Then people can start boomer about that.
Yeah. Something, just to interject on that, so there has been, people have expressed that they want to see both of them in West Paulette. Um, other people have said that they don't. So that's just something to keep in mind. I think that might be nice to have one here, one there, to spread the love.
Do is, I hadn't even looked at them, to be completely honest. They're sitting on the pallet where we set them in the building over there. And, um, there's four batteries, two solar panels, and then the things are all on a pallet. And, um. How mobile are they once we get them together?
Uh, like how easy are they to move? I think they're not, I mean, based on the ones that I've seen in Manchester, I don't.
Any traffic sign, any toll, so you can just.
They're pretty easy and I think they, you can relocate them.
The thing to do is to move them and not fight over where they're going. They'll eventually get everywhere they're needed and, you know.
Have, have a few spots set up that we can go from one place to another.
Start a field over which side of town.
Right, 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 we can, they can, we can rotate them.
Now, do they have to go on town roads or can they go on state roads?
I think state road would be fine in Paulette Village.
The state wouldn't have a problem with that.
Awareness is, and that's where the problem is, you're doing the scoping study. And that would be a good place to start is to have one up here by the bridge or, and then it could even go the other side of Max Market. And then it could go up by Christians and, you know. Run by the Max. So that it's not in the same spot all the time.
Surprise people. They'll be like, oh, I didn't know there was a sign through here.
Yeah, we can make the, the.
There's a speaker man.
Yeah, and then we could put, and we could put one at the spot where people are always blazing into West Paulette, going down that hill.
We can change the messaging depending on how we're feeling. Yeah, we could do naughty or nice or like we can get really sick.
Oh, sure can, yeah.
Message you can say, Julie says your taxes are due.
I was gonna suggest for UTM.
Slow, slow the F down.
Are you in the next six?
Yes.
Right now? So you can get the other two, you can have the four. You can decide what's second going.
Well, maybe we'll clear off the space, this will make, wait until.
They go off the pallet, then we put two more on the pallet.
I did get your Wi-Fi signs on today.
Oh, thank you, yeah, I, I saw that in the treasurer's report that we.
Took the game, yeah, okay, so anyway, I put one on each of the parking signs on each of the parking lots, just.
Nice.
That's where I put them.
Yeah, that's where, that's where it is.
If they don't work, we'll move them somewhere else, but.
I'll drive over there one these days.
Very nice and they're bright, they show up from the road, I don't think it'll be any problem.
Yeah, I had put.
When I came home.
I had put, I had put a little paper. When I printed out little like laminated paper signs, I put one in the West Paulette post office. And the other one, I went to put on that little kiosk, but you can't put things inside the kiosk, so I wasn't sure what to do. So I pinned it to the wood on the outside of the kiosk, so I don't know if someone's gonna take that down or not, but that's what I did.
These show up pretty well. You know, they're, they're 12 by 18, so they're a pretty good size and they're white background with a green font, so they show up pretty good.
Nice, I'm glad we got those.
So I think we have. So we have something on old business, we gotta figure out a placement for the signs, initial, let's, let's call it an initial placement for the signs.
Yes.
For the movable radar signs.
Yes.
That sounds better.
You can say, the earlier you pay your taxes, you can make a suggestion as to where you'd like them. And we will, we will take your.
Drive fast to the treasurer's office.
Screen on, they'll make it.
Yes, very good, okay. I'll add that to the agenda next.
Anything else under Keith's report? Okay, thank you, Keith.
We have the assessor's report, uh, which there was one submitted and there, would you like me to read it?
Sure.
So, Assessor's Office Report to the Paulette Select Board, July 27th, 2021. Grievance hearings were held Monday, July 12th from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00. We had 11 taxpayers grieve either by mail, Zoom, or in person. Deliberations were completed at 4:00 p.m. on Monday, July 19th, and the results of the grievance notices were mailed certificate. Certificate of mailing on that day. BCA, taxpayers who grieved their assessment during our formal grievance and who are not satisfied with the results of grievance have 14 days from the date of notice to notify the clerk in writing that they wish to appeal to the Board of Civil Authority. That deadline date is Monday, August 2nd.
Next Monday?
Yes. Um, a week from yesterday, correct? So Assessor's Office hours, Lisa will continue to work remotely from home, Karen will continue to be in the office on Mondays and Wednesdays and as necessary to keep current with the office work. And that concludes that report.
Do, there's a question of whether a person could come to the BCA not happy with the grievance, but if they didn't completely do the grievance process.
That would be a VLCT question, I guess, possibly.
Yes. We need to research that.
I think that would be, probably that would be the best place to start would be the VLCT. If they didn't, if they didn't go through the whole grievance process with the, with the town assessor.
In timely fashion.
Right, they would have to, uh.
Based on the report, based on the report, it says taxpayers who grieved during the formal grievance and were not satisfied have 14 days from the date of notice to notify the clerk. So it looks like something that pre-qualifies you to be able to go to the BCA to grieve would be that you've completed the formal process correctly. So.
That's what I would, that's the way I am.
I think it, I think, I'm saying that based on just observation, I think that it warrants additional clarification, but based on the process, if you're following by the rulebook, I think that's how it's spelled out, but.
And everything was handled by the town properly?
Mm-hmm. As far, I mean, as far as I know, my hands aren't directly in that pot, but from, based on the reports that we've received from the Assessor's Office, it seems like everybody, it was a little bit unique this year in that they were primarily via Zoom, but from my understanding, everybody was notified with ample time of that. I, and I only know that because I helped Karen to get going on the Zoom and they did that with plenty of time, so.
I think if any other, you know, to, to satisfy would probably, the next best thing would be to go to VLCT with that question. Anything else?
So Town Clerk's memo is next and there was no report from the Town Clerk's Office this week. We heard from Sue and Deb saying that, that there was nothing to report, but there was.
That's me, I have that on my memo.
The consolidated, okay. Never mind. Pass it off to Julie.
So how are you, Julie?
Okay, uh, two warrants this day. Feeble was $8,739.73. Taxpayer was $37,370.85. General fund monies was $21,485. Highway was $16,759.64. And wastewater was $7,865.94. So I think I'll pause there and we can, um, take any questions and make motions on the warrants and then I'll just move piecemeal for this.
Everybody had a chance to look the warrant over, oh, I never, I didn't share them. I looked at them quickly today. Didn't see anything out of the ordinary. Everybody else look over the warrants?
Have to sign them.
Yeah, well, we're making, if nobody has any questions, can we have a motion to accept the warrant?
Sure, I move that we accept the warrants.
One second.
On paper?
Aye.
Code, here.
Okay.
Okay.
You can sign this one too. Those are just invoices for you to review if you had any questions. The next step then is the property tax rate vote. So we need to vote on the rates and we also need to vote on the penalty for late homestead filing. Um, which is by default set in Nimmer at 3%, and I would recommend maintaining that. There was, after grievance, there was a small adjustment to the grant list. So at this point, I'm recommending for the general fund tax rate to be .2653. I'm recommending for the highway tax rate to be .3087. And I'm recommending for the local rate, um, the local agreement rate to be .0054. And I did, at John's request, um, I have sent this all to you by email, but I'll say it now publicly too. With the education rates that are set by Vermont, um, the residential education rate is lower this year. So with, um, with our rates and the residential rate, there's actually a small reduction in the tax rate overall for residents. Um, the non-residential rate did go up but very little, um, so there's actually just a .65% increase in our overall tax rate for non-residents. So that said, the, um, if you take my suggestions, then the overall residential rate would be 1.9142. The overall non-residential rate would be 2.1026. Residential was 1.9142.
Residential was 1.9142 or 1.9?
1.9142.
Thank you.
You guys understand how Julie came up with all those numbers and such. Do I have a little overview of how we get there?
Your grant list, Richard. And you come up with how much pennies on the dollar you gotta have from your easels to reach a budget. That's basically what Julie's done. Dollar 91 tax rate. That's education and lieutenant.
Is that average?
So I have, um, that is a reduction from last year. Last year's home state rate was 1.9450. Year before was 1.871. 1.8618, it's been creeping up a little every year and this year it's gone down.
The state's got the education side of it, you know? So that's passed to Julie based on factors that are out of our control here. And then the ones that you guys really manage are the general fund and the highway.
To be honest, like this part is just math, right? So setting the budget is where the real meat is.
That's what affects it.
And at this point, this is what you have to do with the collective amount of money that your budget is necessa, like necessitating. That was hard to roll.
So does anybody else have any questions for Julie? Regarding the tax rate? Does somebody want to make a motion that we approve those rates?
And 3% penalty for late homestead filing.
And a penalty?
Sure, I'll move that we approve this tax rate and 3% penalty for late homestead filing.
So this is the general fund and the highway and the 3%. So there's three pieces to this motion.
The general fund, highway, and the local agreement. Which the local agreement is, um, for voter approved exemptions. Um, so like fish game, property, the voters approved not collecting education taxes on that property. But the state general ed fund still requires the money, so we have to raise it locally.
So when you say the 3% penalty for the, the late homestead declaration, that goes to the state, the declaration does.
The homestead declaration goes to the state, yes.
Yeah, you normally file it along with your taxes.
The money for the late filing comes to us.
So the town is going to charge the land or the homeowner or the property owner another 3%?
If they file late.
So if they file late, we're just not getting the payment from the state?
No, we still get it, we get it later. So it's more of like a cash flow thing. It's like an incentive for people to do it on time. It also is a headache for my office because I have to reprint everything. Whenever someone files after a certain date, I don't get it until after the tax bills are out. So it's just kind of like a slap on the wrist.
Without the homestead declaration, they don't pay the homeowner.
The rate.
The residential rate, they're gonna pay the non-residential commercial rate. So it just messes up the whole trail once that is not filed on time, so.
Just have to make sure people are aware of that. I don't know how you do that, but.
I mean, write a letter that goes out with every tax bill. So. Um, I don't think, I think 99% of people don't read that letter. But I do put it out there.
And anybody who files their taxes with commercial software preparation, it'll come and be like, homestead! And you just click on it and it's very easy.
Yeah, so.
There's no reason someone shouldn't be able to do that.
Do you have many people that file out late or?
Yeah. Last year, last year was particularly gruesome because they, well, and this year they did, they did kick the tax filing deadline a wee bit, like when the IRS kicked that.
They kicked it till May.
Yeah, and but last year they kicked it down the road a ways because of COVID and it was a lot.
July?
When does a veteran?
Basically, that's all we can really do and hope that people pay attention.
Yeah. Most municipalities do.
When does a veteran exemption or discount come in? Is that part of the grand list?
That's part, well, that, so that's part of the calculation for the local agreement. The state covers up to a 10,000, but then we have, I think the voters have agreed to, uh, like 30,000. So, um, we have to cover that 20 grand difference on each veteran exemption and that's part of the local agreement. It's that and then the voter approved exemptions.
Right. Is that a yearly thing? No, it must be.
I don't, I don't know how, I know that the filing goes through the state, it doesn't go through our office. And I don't, we don't vote on that, um.
It isn't like a five-year thing?
I don't know how often we'd vote on that, but we have not done it while I've been in this role.
So do you want to go over that motion to make sure everything is covered?
Yes, so. The motion is on the table to adopt the general fund tax rate of .2653. Highway tax rate of .3087. Local agreement tax rate of .0054. As well as the late homestead filing penalty of 3%. I also have in the minutes, just a note of the residential education rate set by the state with a slight reduction this year of 1.9142. As well as the non-residential education rate also set by the state at 2.1026.
So those, um, that wasn't actually the education rate.
Okay.
The overall, those are the overall rates that are included, including the municipal rates and the state education rates.
Okay.
And I can email you my.
Thank you. I'm just gonna black out my numbers and I'll fill them in when I'm editing this. As I do. That's my.
So we have a motion on the table. Do we have a second?
Hold on a second.
Second on tax rate motion, is there any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Thank you, Julie.
Uh, the next thing on the, on my memo is the wastewater user fees rate. And I have sent you several Excel files with different options. I don't know what, um, we were significantly over budget last year. And, um, we had a budget. When we set the budget, we had accounted for increasing the revenues that we are collecting and that would get us closer to where we needed, had needed to be last year. And so the, the three options were, um, using all of the $15,000 appropriation from the general fund, using part, um, you know, using, and then using varying amounts of it. I don't recommend using all of it because we used it last year, we needed it, and I don't know that we want this year.
I, I do want to throw out there that it's very likely that we can use some of the ARPA funds for the wastewater plant in this fiscal year.
For projects of maintenance, but not to take down the user fee, right?
Well.
Can we go back?
We can, we can go back to March.
Okay.
Okay, so like, I forget if it's March 21st or March 31st of this year. And we can, let me just, I mean, we'll get to this when we get to this part, but we can use it to make necessary investments in water, sewer, or broadband infrastructure. So, I mean, I'm not entirely certain how it would work financially, but the money that we are, the money that we are going over, right? So the, the money that we're taking, that $15,000, is that from the general fund?
It's an appropriation that was voted on.
Okay.
So it's collected through general fund taxes.
Right.
And that can be spent anywhere?
It was specific to wastewater. That 15,000 was. But it wasn't like designated to a project.
It can be used to pick up the slack, pay bills that, all the shortfalls. And how much of that do you think you'll have to use for that? Because we've already run out of money, right, or gone over budget?
So last year we used, um, last year we used about 13, I think. Just to pay bills that we were, we didn't have the funds for. Um, we used 13,000 from the wastewater savings on that tank cleaning project. And then, and then we used probably about the same, just to transfer to cover our bills.
So the only other alternative to make up the difference is raise the taxes, right? The wastewater user fees.
Uh, the, the cleaning project, which was substantial, what was the date of that? Was that post the March date that you were talking about? Did you pre, use the ARPA funds for it?
I think it was September.
So it's, it's for.
March 2021?
March 2021, yeah. Yeah, this year.
Last year, they got in there and they jetted them and ended up getting a lot of the solids out and stuff that had accumulated over the last several years and stuff.
So going forward, if there were to be another project like that, we could use these funds on it.
Use that funds.
Yeah, rather than pulling from these other funds.
We, we voted extra money to do, well, that was part of what that 15,000 was supposed to be for, for the jetting of the tank and the repair of that. So we could actually use the ARPA funds for the jetting of the lines and then we could have this other money to, to buy back down some of the taxes. Right?
Yeah, that would, yeah, we could do that. And that was certainly wouldn't, if what, what was it, 13,000 for the jetting?
It was something in that range.
That would, that would not remotely use up all of these funds. So, I mean, I know that we're going to need to talk to our constituents about what we're using the funds for. But since we have a lot of options and wastewater is one of them, I mean, I'm, I'm personally in favor of finding a way to use some of these funds to make the wastewater fees not have to go up exponentially.
Because it would go up from eight something right now to 1,000?
Now it's 794 hookup.
794? So it'd go up almost $200, right? Because we're looking at $1,000.
If we, if we did 1,000, it'd be a $206 increase.
And that's, that's a lot.
What's the state tell you? It should be. They've told you repeatedly at $750 or whatever, you're not sustainable over there, correct?
They wanted it to be in that.
Around 1,000?
Thousand and above.
They're telling you that it needs to be 1,000 or above to be sustainable to operate that place.
That's fine, but if people can't pay it.
I know, I know.
What good's that?
Is there another, another option to get some grant money to pay, to help the town pay for that? I know there's like, like there's recreational grant money for trail stuff, but that's kind of out of that jurisdiction, but there must be something else to help.
Pretty much everything, all the money is for, for upgrades or projects or stuff like that, not for operating. There's, there's not really any money out there for operating expenses. Frank?
Isn't there something coming through in regards to the cost having to do with the spruce gum pump station? There's something, something that came through, but the engineers were submitting something to me.
See, Jill had part of that in her proposal. But still, this was, that was all part of the extra money. We, we, that's why we went for 10,000. We voted on 10, 15,000 for repairs and upgrades, right? Isn't that what we called it?
One, for the appropriations, yeah. It was like repairs and upgrades to waste.
And that, and that, that's what the, the spruce gum pump station, jetting of the collection system and, and the check valve there.
Some of that hasn't been done yet?
No, but it, that money didn't come out of the user fee budget.
Right, right. But what I'm saying is, is that this ARPA fund, that would qualify for more than likely. And so, and you have up to five years to use it once it's.
We have to dedicate it by 2024 and we can use it up through 2026.
Okay. So you got yourself a cushion for these types of projects. And that's kind of, you know, first of all, hard to budget for. So, and you can't take it and put it into a dedicated slush fund. It's an as-needed basis probably is how they.
Yeah, you cannot put it into rainy day funds for financial reserves.
Right. So this would be touch and go as to how you would want to manage that so that you wouldn't be seeing the increases due to that and you also wouldn't be needing to go to the general fund. That's all. And that's it. I don't know how to answer that.
So another good thing to know would be what is the average for some of these other towns that just have, have a sewer hookup? Are we in the ballpark?
So I mean, I think that goes to Keith's point. We had someone come from, um, not from the USDA, right, but from a company that contracts with the USDA. The USDA like flagged us as having an unsustainable rate structure.
Is it because we don't have enough people paying or because we're not charging enough? We don't have enough hookups?
Well, the bottom line is because we're not bringing in enough revenue, right? So, um.
Right, but why?
The factors that go into that, they don't care about because that's kind of on our plate. Like we are limited in where we can bring the hookups. So unless someone, um, you know, tears down a couple of buildings in West Pollitt and builds, uh, you know, three or several three-story walkups in multiple apartment units, we're not going to be adding on hookups. Um, so our hands are tied on that front. I think it's a great idea to increase the number of hookups, but how do we as a municipality play a role in that?
Right, I have just a thought and it's a pretty crazy idea, but, so I brought up that, uh, recreational, um, grant money for trail use and stuff. And it's like over the, since 2018, they had like, uh, $30,000 worth of grants they gave out. This year they have $5 million worth of grant money, plus another million dollar for trail, uh, development and projects. They're looking for like 25 projects statewide to do this. What if, this is just off the top of my head, what if we had like a public bathroom over there for the rail trail? That we could get grant money to put it in and it would add a few bathrooms and we could use that money to help pay for the rest of the town.
We're talking about what we're going to do with that, that lot that used to be Dutchies.
Yeah.
We're, we're going to be applying for a grant to do some planning about what to do with that lot. And, I mean, that could be something to consider there was if we wanted to try to put in a, you know. But then does the town?
If it was a public bathroom, the town would be paying the sewer.
Yeah, so it doesn't bring in.
It's a good idea for the, I mean, it's still a good idea to have a public restroom.
It's a great idea.
There would, there were some people actually looking for a bathroom. So if you get a public bathroom there and it was charged to the state where the state was a user and like Larry Leslie, where he was paying based on a number of users using it. So it was increased above the residential rate that was paying for commercial. Then the state might be able to kick in a larger amount if there was a public facility there that was draining into our system.
So it needs to be a state building on the rail trail.
Going forward, um, there are things that we can do with updating the zoning bylaws to encourage, um, kind of what you said, you know, people to build multifamily dwellings in West Pollitt. There are things we can do regarding lot size and there's, there's setbacks and various stuff like that, which is on our list to look at, but this is not an immediate solution, right? It would be like within a year or two, we might make these changes. And then people who were thinking of putting in slightly denser units would have to build that in the future. So again, it's not an immediate solution. Um, I did have a thought, again, thinking about the ARPA funds. One way that we can, we are able to use them to offer direct assistance to individuals who were economically impacted by the pandemic for things like rents, mortgages, or utility payments. So if we wanted to develop an option for people who are having, if we do have to raise the rate, if we can develop an option for people who've had economic hardship from the pandemic to get assistance from the town, pay it using some of these funds, that would be an option for making it less onerous for people. That would be an option for making it less onerous for people.
I guess my problem with that would be that I think you're getting that federal money that's trickling down to the town and it should be used for best benefits all taxpayers and not targets specifically to people on the wastewater treatment plant. Now, I don't have anything against them over there, but still, that is a separate user. Nobody assists me when I flush my toilets. And the cost of that is all going up and up and up. And when I come to replace my septic system, nobody's gonna be there to help me. So this is federal dollars that have trickled down to us. I think we should spread them across the town and do something that benefits the entire town and not just the wastewater users.
Just a friendly, not trying to halt this productive conversation, but it is eight thirty and we do have quite a bit of meeting left. So just friendly time check.
Do we have to set this rate tonight for the sewer?
When do you want to do collections?
Okay, so to keep with our current collection dates, do we need to set this rate tonight? We do, okay. All right, what does the board feel?
How many percentage of an increase is that?
If you did a thousand, it'd be twenty-five point nine. If you used the entire appropriation, you'd still be at nine hundred and twenty-five dollars and eight cents per hookup.
So for this year, we would only be using a portion of the, the ARPA money, the fifteen, the fifteen thousand to cover those projects that we were planning on covering with the fif, with the fifteen thousand. Right, the jetting, the pump upgrade and the check valve. We could probably use the ARPA money to cover those projects. And then kick that toward, toward the rate for this year, but next year it's gonna be. So it would, it would basically just be stepping, stepping it one more year, but ultimately it's gonna be a thousand dollars a year. And there's really no way to do it, either add more users or find some way to cut your expenses. Frank?
For several years with the concept of a community solar on that don't property back there, I was advocating that a district return, sewer district be turned into a West, a West Pollitt sewer and energy district. And a feasibility study is, would be put in to see how much money could be made off from a solar bonded potentially, solar there. And the revenue would flow into the sewer district to pay down the fees from electrical production. Other members, other people in town would have access to buy into shares of this community solar. We don't have that solar or anybody could participate. This would be a larger.
That's a long-term project.
It would be something that could be initiated, other places are doing it, but we, we just have to put it together.
Right, right now, we can't, we can't do with that. I, I understand what you're saying, but right now, we have to act tonight on this.
That's right, that's what the planning commission has to make adjustments and put that into the energy plan.
So those are the three options that we have. At a minimum, it's gonna cost people nine twenty-five. At a maximum, it's gonna cost a thousand.
I mean, maximum could be, I mean, like if you did zero, if you did absolutely nothing, one thousand forty-eight dollars and three cents.
A thousand forty-eight, okay.
And does that include paying Jill all of twenty twenty there for a complete year?
Right, that's what we went in our budget date. She has incorporated a, a small percentage increase.
That's what her contract had, I don't think she put that in her budget. She gave us the budget that included.
I think she kept the rate the same as.
She kept, I think she has standard for us this year.
The biggest, the biggest thing that we, that we've encountered was that our last operator was way under average for operation costs, like almost fifteen hundred dollars a month. And that's why we were able to maintain such a low rate.
And did a very good job as well.
Exactly.
For a few breakdowns, very little problem.
Very little problem. Tests were always done, samples were always on time, everything was well done.
Had all the parameters for the stain.
I mean, everything was perfect. I used to go in there and mess things up for them because it was like you took a cellphone and measured each little volume bottle down through there so that they were all perfect. And I would go just mix them up because it would drive them crazy and I'd have to go fix them.
Explains things to me.
But he's, uh, no, it was, credit to Jeff, he did a very good job.
He was very frustrated about the upgrade for certain. I mean, I never went, I never went in there and saw mud on the floor. All winter long, you never went in there, the floor was never dirty, it was mopped daily.
Did an extra.
He was a really good guy, he did a great job for the town, but unfortunately, it didn't set us in a good position because.
And prepare us for the future.
Right.
Um, is it possible that some of the funds that Jessica's talking about could be put into a study? That could be decided how to make that thing feasible on a reasonable rate? And that's where the money should be spent, it would benefit everybody. Because then the people that earn on it are already contributing to fifteen thousand every year. And then if we could take some of that money and look into some kind of an operation there that could save money and run cheaper, then that's where that money would be best spent.
And thirty-two, five-ten is what they're really contributing because we pay half of that.
I know, I know.
If it could, if it could count as an upgrade or improvement.
Well, I think it's a, it's a feasibility study, probably, is what it would be called and to, to see whether there could be that kind of improvements made. I've always felt that one of the biggest factors was somebody needs to be there seven days a week. I don't know why, because there's capacity enough in that plant to shut it off for the weekend and start it again.
Because it's a direct discharge permit?
It's a direct discharge permit and they say it's got to go, you can't do that. But there's, they got, they've got to find some wiggle room as well. And just because they say no, doesn't mean you can't get their fingers in the vise once in a while and, you know, at least murder with them because they're.
That's what the, that's what the state just told.
Oh, yeah, I know, we've.
I have just a quick question and, uh, I, I don't know a lot about the West Pollitt sewer system, but you said there was like a hundred and twenty-two homes or taxpayers on that? And there's no way to add more to that system, where does it actually end?
It ends at the, where Larry Leslie used to have the hookery there on the outskirts of town. And it goes up as far as where Bob Jones' farm is. It's the last house just before Bob.
Pretty much the town and there's nobody really building in that area. It can't go farther than Bob Jones because there's culverts and rivers?
No, zoning changes.
Zoning changes.
Five acres only.
And land trust.
Kind of same thing. And then south they get to the Kramer farm, it's all preserved land, there's not any gap.
Can't be on the border. Gotcha.
We can build up, but there's a thirty-five foot limit on building up, so it should be looked at.
History showed that, that people have taken duplexes and made them into single houses. No one, no one is even wants to build up, so.
Right now, they've got to.
There's no, there's, there hasn't been any, any cases coming one, to, for people to, to do that. So, you know, you're, you're, you're wishing, so.
A slight tangent, when are we gonna sell that property in West Pollitt so someone will put a building on it and hook up to the sewer?
That's not.
Does the town pay the sewer fee for the fire, for the old store?
Right.
Who is gonna send a bill?
Nothing.
Or is that now a freebie?
We're still, we've still digressed a lot, we need to act on this right now and, and go from there.
Personally, I'm really hesitant to raise the rates as far as a thousand, so I would go with the, taking the entire fifteen thousand. I know that's a lot and kind of pushing it, but I think that we have a lot of options for funding going forward.
To replace the, the fifteen thousand? So we can still accomplish the task that we had set out to do with the fifteen thousand, but the money will come from a different pocket, it will come from these.
That's what I'm hoping. I mean, obviously, we have a lot of, we have a lot of decisions to make about this, but.
And that, and that would be only a portion? It's what, a hundred and forty thousand or something?
Hundred and forty thousand.
So it wouldn't be like we're spending all the, all the money we're getting on this on one particular group in town.
That's why I'm not as worried about part of it. If part of it went to the people who are using the wastewater, because there's a lot of other parts which could be used for all sorts of other things that could benefit the town. But that's, 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 that's my opinion. I don't know what the rest of the board thinks.
So Dan, what do you, what do you think?
I somewhat agree, yes. I, I, I don't think we can go to a thousand.
I think it was, it's too much of an increase in one year. I think that we need to look into ways of making that more efficient and running it more efficiently. Because we're gonna be constantly running into this.
Yeah, it's just gonna hop and up and up and up, that's where we're headed now.
Yeah.
So now, do we, do we want to go with the full fifteen thousand this time? And anticipate being able to repay that with the ARPA funds? Or do you, John and Rich, are you looking at halfway?
I'm thinking the full fifteen thousand.
Are you thinking the same thing, Dan?
Yes.
Does somebody want to make a motion to that effect?
Was that option one? I think under your list here, yeah, option one. Yeah, I'll make that motion that we use the full fifteen thousand and go with option one for the wastewater fees. So let's talk numbers for my minutes.
The motion should be to set the wastewater user fee rate at nine twenty-five oh eight per hookup.
At nine twenty-five oh eight.
Do you second on that motion?
I'll second that.
Any more discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Carried.
Now Keith, you might know something about this. Where would we start as far as the permit goes with that wastewater treatment plant?
It's, it's the discharge permit that renews every, what, five years, Mike?
Yep.
And it's, the next time it comes up for renewal would be the time to visit that and try to at least get them to understand that this is becoming cost prohibitive to even have houses in West Pollitt due to this and they've got to accommodate a town of Pollitt somehow in order to assist and find a more.
Wayne Graham is probably gonna be a good starting point with rural water.
Probably, yes.
He, he may know where we can go, so I'll get you his contact information.
Where, what are we, are we two years or three years into the discharge permit right now?
Maybe only two.
Because there's some opportunities there. I was there the other day, that pump was broke down. I mean, there's plenty of capacity, there doesn't need to be somebody there every day.
permitted for forty-four thousand gallons a day and we're putting eight thousand gallons a day through it. That seems to me we're working at a quarter of capacity. Seems to me we could run the plant three days a week and get done what we need to do.
And that may help some of the settling issue too.
It might, it may create other issues because it goes septic on you if you're not, you go from around sewage to septic. You know, there's other issues, but.
That's what they have the aerators.
Deserves looking into, yeah.
Eight forty-five.
Eight thirty-five, Frank?
Forty-five.
If I could address John, Chair, or if you'd be willing to mention that, John. As a former state representative, would it be possible that there be a special, something introduced to the legislature to exempt us from the full seven-day management to get to the goals where he has some, which we would be a carbo from what would apply everywhere else where the legislature says we have our carbon out for West Pollitt and you have to politically push it through. Is that something that could be on?
I think that's, that's too much into the weeds. The legislature gets into much more wider policy things because you can say that. And if I'm the rep from Pollitt and I'm trying to convince somebody from Ennisburg or Bratterboro that you need to exempt Pollitt, that's a hard sell on something like that.
So we're, we gotta end the sewer discussion right now and keep moving.
I'm not done.
Right.
Uh, next issue is the website manager. He was paid last time, but he just presented me with like a bill, like a, like a contractor would. So I just paid him that way, realizing now, a little bit late, that he actually had submitted everything to be paid as an employee, but I don't know if that's, um, he had submitted his, his paperwork to be an employee, but he did not complain about the way he was paid or present himself to me as someone who needed to be like paid on payroll. So I'm thinking he's probably fine with it if you guys are fine with it.
I think it has to do with our, if he's this private contractor, then he has to have insurance. And I don't know if he has his own insurance, so then he would.
Well, it just, it, it's not that he. It's bid us before, like with our road mowing person who doesn't have, um, workers' comp insurance on himself. But it's also a much smaller amount of money that we're paying this guy annually. So it would be a minimal cost if he say didn't have workers' compensation insurance on himself.
He doesn't have to, he has to have a certificate of liability. He doesn't have to have workman's comp.
No, but it, the way that it negatively affects us is when our workers' comp audit is done on subcontractors that don't provide insurance for themselves, we are required to have an insurance pot that they draw from. It has nothing to do with liability, like if they can have full coverage on everything but not provide, not pay for workers' compensation insurance on themselves. And then that's where we then are required to have an insurance pot that they can draw from. And that costs us money.
Has he only been paid once?
He's only been paid once. He like didn't, he doesn't submit, that's what threw me off was he submitted a bill for six months.
Because when I, when he was on boarded, it was his offer letter said, you are being hired as a town employee. I don't know if this is appropriate for public, I mean, we're not talking numbers, but, and he, I had communicated with him that, you know, he would be in, submit his hours and we get paid bi-weekly and such, so.
So he was hired.
You can ask him that going forward to, to do that that way, or we can just continue on this way.
Treat him as a tenant, as a subcontractor?
I can check with him too, I mean, he does this for other outfits, so I can check with him too.
I think we need to clarify it instead of just kind of rolling with it because I don't want it to be a gray area.
I will, I speak with him frequently, so I will be happy.
Julie, finish, Frank?
Um, the rest of it is just like stuff I'm gonna tell you. So, uh, this month we received the first round Homestead State payment for twenty thousand four hundred and twenty dollars. We received the quarterly highway state aid for classes two and three roads, twenty-four thousand six hundred and nineteen dollars and ninety-nine cents. Uh, we also received the quarterly highway supplement payment, which is for this year and it's, um, because of COVID funds, they, they are giving us a quarterly supplement of two thousand seven twenty-four eighty-seven. And the other, another thing was that according to Consolidated Communications, that's our phone company, they sent that little slip in the bill. The FCC has adopted a new nine eight eight three-digit number to be used nationwide to reach the National Suicide Prevention and Mental Health Crisis Lifeline, which won't start until July sixteenth, twenty twenty-two. But in order to make that change, they are required to make a change in the way their dialing procedure is implemented. And that means that everyone in Vermont will have to begin using the eight oh two area code for all local calls, which is effective now, but they will still patch calls through without eight oh two, but that stops October twenty-fourth. For landlines. I do? Very quick, I don't buy my children's cell phones so they get landlines.
I don't get service, so.
Yeah, I don't get service either.
I don't even have call.
And so I'm thinking that we would want to, we'll probably want to update Sean on that because I, I actually think it's a good idea for us to have the National Suicide Prevention and Mental Health Crisis information somewhere on our town website. So I would like to. So I would like to, I just wanted to publicly say that and then we'll have Sean update the website. And then the last thing is just, it's a me personally thing, but with the Delta variant of taking cases in the state and the country in general, and I have a son who's not vaccinated, until we go to a hybrid model, this is the last meeting I'm going to be attending in person until he's vaccinated.
Anything else? Frank?
On the employee contractor status situation relative to insurance, is it real sticky? We'll get there.
We, we, we have to keep rolling tonight until we find this out from him.
This is very important. I'm saying contact V L C D.
Our insurance company deals with us and we'll, we'll handle that. We got to keep rolling.
So my standard policies don't cover liability relative to weapons. You want to make sure you have that and you want to make sure if this guy's operating as an employee, it might be better with that coverage because he doesn't have it.
Okay, thank you.
And come back on you where his actions are and that might not cover.
Kristen?
Frank, that's good. I haven't eaten dinner yet, so I'm going to keep this train rolling here. So the next thing, we have the emergency management director's report. There's no report at this meeting, however, Bob Jones has requested to utilize the town hall auditorium on Wednesday, August 25th, 2021, from four to seven. The dental, the Rutland Free Clinic is sending a dental volunteer to do a, meet with a dental provider to discuss your oral health provided by Rutland County Free Clinic and the United Way of Rutland County. Registration is required to attend this free event. Anybody who does not have dental insurance is eligible to attend 18 years, attend 18 years and older, and there are free oral healthcare supplies provided to each participant. So I think it's a lovely thing and there's nothing going on in the auditorium at that time.
Consensus, all good with that?
Yeah.
Yes, we are.
Okay. Thank you.
I think we've.
And there's nothing from the health officer and I received nothing from the wastewater treatment facility.
Older unfinished business there, ARPA funds. I think we have started this conversation.
Right.
I don't know that we have a lot more to discuss tonight due to the time restraint, I think.
Yeah, let me just briefly tell you what this document is that I handed out. The language here, the number one through four is the language from the actual appropriation, right? So it's not my language. So when it says to make necessary investments in water, sewer, broadband infrastructure. Under each of these, I have made almost like little bullet points. Some of these are suggestions that I've heard from people in the town that we might do and some other ones are just sort of generalized things that we could do. I do want to point out that if we do any kind of direct assistance to impacted individuals or businesses or hazard pay, that will involve us having to come up with a technique to do it, right? So there will be logistics. Whereas if we do something like air filtration or air conditioning, stormwater runoff, wastewater plant, purchasing the equipment for hybrid public meetings, if we do those sorts of things, we don't have to reinvent the wheel. These are all things, and there are more things that we could do as well. I didn't make the full list of things, but these are the ones that most struck me. Lost revenue, I'm working with Julie on that. There is a, this would be the easiest way to use it in the way that we could help, as Keith said, the most people in town because we could use it for anything. If we have lost money based on the most recent fiscal year before the pandemic, which would be fiscal year, the one 2019, right? Yeah. And if we compare that to the most recent fiscal year and we lost money, we can just fill in these funds for that lost money. We can do that for every year going forward. And they are assuming that we're going to have a 4% rate of growth. I doubt we have a 4% rate of growth in our funds coming in. So we could each year fill in some of these funds and it could increase by 4% each year. So we, I don't have the numbers on that yet, but.
I'm working on it.
Yeah, we're going to. Yeah, there's, there's, there's a lot. I, I, I kind of got the gist of it, but I was like, you'll, you'll have the fund. So in two weeks, I can probably report back on what would be the amount that we could use for that. So, and then the list at the bottom is the things that we cannot spend it on. This is not the one pager that I would want to give out to people. This is just more of a, for our information. And I do like the idea that we had from last time that we might want to narrow it down to four or five major things before we seek a lot of public input, but.
Excellent. Well, thank you for putting that all together for us.
And I can continue to add, we can just continue to keep this going on the agenda so that we can keep talking about it.
Yeah, because then we'll have better numbers in two weeks. And also if, if more guidance comes down, I know, I know buildup broadband is mentioned here, but it would be really hard for us to do that with this amount of money. I think we should leave it to the CUDs. But I put it on there because it's a thing that we could do technically. Oh, and I just want to add that if anybody has a thought and they're like, hey, could we use the money for this, message me and I can look through the various materials that I have and we can, we can add things. Also Eric Hall, who's the guy who we're working with for the traffic study, is also the Rutland Regional Planning Person who is on these ARPA funds. So I could contact him if we had any questions about would this be, could we use it this way?
I just need someone's signature on the auditorium thing.
Anybody else having questions on the ARPA funds? Okay. So we'll keep that conversation going. I know we did touch on hybrid meeting model and somebody somewhere along the line that circulated about a thing called an OWL.
Yeah, so Julie, I had seen it come through from the list. Both Julie and Deb sent it to me. It came through from the list serve, I believe, from the clerks. And there's a new, a pro, or a product out there called the OWL. And it looks to be a really efficient way to utilize a hybrid meeting model and.
Who was using it? Williston?
Williston, I think it was. And so effectively there's, there's this little like Bluetooth speaker type of a device that would sit in the middle and it's got a microphone and a speaker and whatnot from what I could see. And you just have to plug something from a computer into that and then that also would go into a screen. So it would require the purchase of a screen, which we had already talked about. And the computer to run it.
Owls are about eight to $900. I talked to the IT guy at work and they, they started using one in a meeting room at work and he says it works pretty well.
Yeah.
It can even think about the ACOL and stuff.
Yep.
And adjust stuff.
Yeah.
Says he's not really sure if it could be placed in, you'd have to do some work to place it in the room so you could get everybody, you know? It may need to be placed over there so it sees everybody at once.
Yeah.
But he feels that it, it may be a very viable solution for this.
I've contacted, I contacted the people and looked at their website and they can do, they can do next week a live demo for me.
Okay.
So I don't know if anybody else would want to be in on this live demo. I have to let them know some times.
Okay, I'll connect with you.
Yeah.
Because it would be helpful for me to see it too.
So I think. I don't know how they're going to do it. I'm assuming it's a remote live demo of some kind.
Right. Maybe they'll use the OWL. We can see hopefully there. So basically it would just mean pricing out the OWL and then the screen.
Associated.
Which theoretically we could use ARPA funds for. So, but I think that it's important that like, you know, as Julie said with, I think, not to be doom and gloom, but I do think just the way that things are going, Vermont is wonderful, but much of the country is not, you know, not so wonderful. So I do think that it's important that we create a hybridized model because the only other way, I don't think it's very likely that the state of Vermont is going to go back to just all remote because it would require a state of emergency and hopefully we don't get there. However, I do feel like it would be really nice to give people the option to attend, but not physically have to be here for, you know, safety.
Regardless of the, that, I think there's a lot of people that would attend the meetings if they could attend from home.
Yeah.
Without any, take, even removing the, the threat of the COVID, so.
Yeah, so if we like this OWL, I mean, how quickly can we move on approving, buying something and getting it set up?
Well, I think we'd have to work with our computer guy to get it, to get a computer that, that would interface between the OWL and the screen and we'd have to get a screen and.
Which would be pretty, I can't, this computer is not so great and it, I don't think it could handle, like it just froze halfway through the meeting and I had to restart it and get it back up. So I think that if.
Our IT guy said you, you want a dedicated unit.
So if maybe we could, I was thinking, and I do, the amount that it's going to be, I think is worthy of a motion so that the board can make sure that it's budgeted. But I think that if for the next meeting, I don't know if you want to hook me up with Vinny, but if we could get a screen and the computer priced out and OWL.
We can see from him and I.
I think maybe next meeting we can make a motion and discuss on it.
Yeah.
I had his email. I emailed him once, but I never heard back from him, but I can send it to you so you can.
Or, yeah, and I can connect with Deb and Sue.
For Deb and Sue can get it to you if I don't.
And I think it's nice because the Williston clerk was like, she, I think her quote was that she's like technologically phobic, like a lot of, I mean, it's intent, it's a little overwhelming to try to maintain all of, all the things. So I think it sounds like a good option.
And she said it was very easy to set up.
Yeah.
Certainly, certainly deserves more investigation, I would say. Frank?
Meetings would be a hoot.
It does actually look like a little OWL. It's kind of cute, honestly.
OWL people will know what flat screens, a lot of the flat screens have Android operating systems. They're thrown on computers in the, in the big flat screens already.
And we'll find that out with that discussion. Thank you.
Ask them what flat screen would interface with the OWL, blah, blah, blah. And they have it all on that internet.
Okay, so we're going to do an executive session, but let's do public comment first and then we'll go to the office. Does anybody have any public comment tonight? Okay, thank you very much all for coming. We're going to go into executive session. Would somebody make a motion please? And then we can go right in the office.
I can just leave.
We'll go right in the office.
I know that we enter executive session. To discuss employee labor relation agreements.
We can just go right into Deb's office and then we don't have to worry about, everybody clear now, so.